Okay, we'll call it January 24th meeting of the Planning Commission order. We'll begin with the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the majestates of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Perkovich.
Here.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Teedman.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the December 20th meeting.
So move second.
When you're ready.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. We have three public hearings this evening. The format we follow for the public hearings is we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do at a particular location. Then those wishing to speak against are afforded a like opportunity. Then if any questions arise from the audience, we can address those at that time. So with that in mind, the first public hearing this evening is a conditional use permit to allow traditional retail activities incidental to permitted uses at 8815 East Avenue. Is that applicant here? Would you come up and identify yourself for the clerk, please?
My name is Scott Klein, and I am a 50% owner in CW Trains.
Okay. And what do you want to, you want to retail trains at that location?
Correct. We'd like to strictly Lionel toy trains. It would be the only business that we would be conducting there. We work on them, play with them, just enjoy them.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Anybody have any questions? If not, we'll close the public portion. Kathy, anything from the administration?
No, other than the fact that the total percentage of space that the retail portion occupies, we've calculated at 12%, which is under the 25% maximum.
Okay. Now, you and your partner own the building, is that correct?
No. My partner's son-in-law owns the building.
Okay. But you share a common space?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
Thank you. How long have you been operating there? I notice you're open for business.
We moved in last winter and did not officially open until October of this past year.
Okay.
So it's just been several months.
All right. When was it brought to your attention that you required a CUP to operate there?
Somebody from the city came in and was doing a little promotional thing on us, seeing what the business was all about and whatnot. And it was shortly thereafter that my partner, Brian, was informed that we had some things to take care of and tie up, so.
Do you have any other facilities in Lake County or Cog County?
Businesses, you mean? No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? If not, you've read the staff report. You understand the conditions that exist.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else with questions? Okay, we'll close the public, or close this portion of the meeting and allow for questions if there are any more questions. Mr. Sedoti, you satisfied?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll motion for approval with the three conditions.
Second.
Call the roll when you have an opportunity.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Just as a point of information, I have bought trains there, so. And I paid full retail for them.
We'll talk about that.
Now I can do the soft shoe. You're all set.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Second public hearing this evening is a conditional use permit to allow outside dining and/or drinking at 9377 Mentor Avenue for Starbucks at Heasley Point.
Good evening. I'm Adam Mackey with Starbucks. And the request is to, we're relocating basically catty corner from where it's currently located over to Heasley Point, and we want to have a couple of two tops outside.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Anybody with questions? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Kathy, anything from the administration?
Our main comment, which we have been in contact with the applicant, is the requirement of the bollards around patio. This was when it was previously presented about a year ago. They were shown, but this is a new submittal. They need to be put back onto the plans.
Okay. Can we get some architectural features to the bollards as opposed to just the typical bollards that go in?
Such as?
Well, I'm thinking, Mr. Zeeman and I attended a couple Indians games last year. We saw some very nice landscape bollards in the city of Cleveland. And I'm thinking, we don't want to just look like we're trying off a freighter.
I'd have to look into what our spec is, but I don't think it's like a standard bollard that you would see.
Okay. Well, we don't want to see a standard bollard. We'd like to see something with a little architectural feature to it. I think, isn't there a place on Mentor Avenue that did that?
Well, in some of the recent submittals, they've actually incorporated it as part of a fence, which helps to make it more aesthetically appealing to the outside.
But you would agree to that, right?
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. I don't know what exactly we're talking about, so I can't speak to exactly the specification for the bollard that you would.
Go ahead, Mr. Varga.
Well, I think instead of trying to tell you what to do, we can tell you what not to do, which is we don't want to see pipe bollards, you know, a concrete-filled steel pipe. We want to see something else.
Okay.
And you can do that, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Anything else for this applicant?
Well, as part of one of the conditions, item two, is to include some railing or decorative fencing, particularly on the side where the end of the patio, edge of the patio, abuts the drive-through. So that would be one portion, and if it could even be wrapped around, that would be ideal.
Okay. You would agree to that, would you not?
Yeah, no, I don't think that'll be a problem. I mean, just as long as we're not blocking the entrance with people coming from the parking lot, but she's talking about coming around the corner.
Okay. So do we need to modify that condition, Kathy, or does that condition satisfy you?
I think we're fine.
Okay.
We typically do want to rail.
Okay. So any, commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
What's the estimated projected timeframe you're going to open up that facility?
Right now, we're looking at sometime early fall, so around August.
What is the seating capacity inside?
I honestly don't know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You know you can't store the furniture outside, right? Okay. Just wanted to make that clear. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with seven conditions?
And you understand the conditions?
Yes.
I'll second.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. You're all set.
Thank you.
Third and final public hearing, a conditional use permit to allow an automobile repair shop and limited retail sales at 7588 Tyler Boulevard.
I'm Greg Hopkins.
From?
Mobility Works.
Okay.
The applicant.
I know this gentleman.
You know, Carmen Pederniti from DNS Custom Van.
Okay. And give us a little overview of what you want to do there. I know it's a change of ownership, basically, right?
It's, you know, we're really continuing the prior use.
Right.
But it's under our banner.
Right.
And it is no difference.
So it's a change of ownership.
Change of ownership for one of the companies inside, yes. Because DNS Automotive always was, has been in there for 22 years, doing the same thing. It's just that we sold the one division, the mobility division, to Mobility Works. And we just want to make sure that if we're going to operate in there, they're going to operate in there temporarily for about, anywhere for up to a year, that everybody understands it's not MC Mobility, it's now called Mobility Works.
Right.
They put a new sticker on the sign. You know, we're just trying to be upfront. We have a conditional use permit to do what we do. We've been doing it for 22 years there. I just want to make sure that their name can be added to our conditional use permit, or they can get their own. So this way, everybody can continue like the.
I understand. So you've read the staff report?
Yes, we have.
Seen the conditions that exist.
We have.
And you're okay with those?
We are.
Okay. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I just reiterate what Mr. Pederniti indicated, that we already have a CUP on file for DNS. This is a second CUP for the property.
Okay. Questions, commissioners? Any questions for the applicant?
Just a question to the city. Has there ever been any complaints or concerns about the operation in the past?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
That's right.
Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with the eight conditions.
There a second?
Second.
When you're ready.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Under old business, items four and five were tabled at a previous meeting, will remain on the table tonight, although they will not be discussed. Number six, final site plan and architectural review of a commercial building, Hobby Lobby at 7852 Mentor Avenue. You drew the short straw, right? Okay.
I'm Becky. I'm the construction manager for Hobby Lobby stores. Talk about and discuss. We're going to build a building.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Should I start?
Go ahead.
I can appreciate from our last meeting that some of the comments that we made are reflected in the plan, in the elevations, and those being establishing a parapet height high enough to hide the equipment.
Yes.
To create some windows on the south side, or some architectural feature. But now that we see it a little more closely, we're looking at painted tilt-up panels, right? Yeah. I think, and I'm speaking for myself, but others may join in or feel the way they do. The mall is probably the premier commercial district in the entire county. And I've always considered tilt-up panels, especially if they're painted or something like that, to be something that we almost not always allow in an industrial area. So in a commercial area, and you know, I'm looking for more natural finishes, not painted concrete, brick, split face, that would be more in line with even the other buildings at the mall that are there now. Last time, I just mentioned as an example, I didn't mean that you needed to copy it, or that, but just to reflect the importance of its location, that the bookstore at the far north end of the mall on Mentor Avenue is a pretty nicely designed building. And it has a lot of materials and windows and landscaping, and it appears, in my opinion, to be an appropriate design for that location. Different building, but that location. I'm just still kind of, I use the term underwhelmed, with this presentation of materials in a very visible location in the city. And then I did something, could I get somebody? I mean, I just went to the, went to the internet, typed in Hobby Lobby. Second picture that comes up in images. Why couldn't we get something more like this?
Well, this store actually did this. It's a.
Great. You're the right person to answer that question.
It was an existing building. This is what we leased.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what it looked like when we started. The prototypical store is the texture coat painted. Any roundup of Hobby Lobbies that you go visit looks like this. Island, Ohio, Reynoldsburg, several Springfield, several Ohio, and across the nation, they're all the same design. They look the same, they're all the same colors, they're the same size. That's a prototypical. That being said, I believe we have discussed and provided some drawings where we have posed brick pilasters along the sides, and then make entrance on the south side.
Well, it's windows on the south side.
The spandrel windows, yeah.
Right. I guess I still go back to the fact that if you're willing to do that kind of a design, even on an existing building, you could certainly reflect that on a new building.
Yeah, we didn't do any of that. We stuck our sign on the front of that building. Sorry.
I guess that doesn't change my feeling about it. It's, the existing building that you stuck your sign on is more attractive than your standard building. That's, I guess, my opinion. And maybe I should leave it at that at this point.
Just, you know, I just want to say again, this is our prototypical design that we build across the nation.
I understand. I still don't like it.
Chair, Snow.
Go right ahead, Mr. Cicero.
Not to stay on the internet. But, you know, after Mr. Varga talked about going on the internet, I just did the same thing, images. There's a number of different designs.
Exactly.
That Hobby Lobby uses where you use brick a lot more. And I, either existing buildings or not, but just going to that site, if you, if you look at past pictures of what that site looked like when Office Max was there, and then you got the theater, and then you have the bookstore, there's always a use of brick. And I just think, I think underwhelmed is a word I would use, too. There's got to be more character to this building, and I think adding some brick to it, even similar to the existing building that you designed, that's something I'd like to see here. I just think, this is a, this is a corner that there's a lot of traffic coming on 84, as well as coming through the mall. And I think it's too key of a corner just to have an image like this. I think there's got to be more character there.
And once again, I think we have proposed that we would put those pilasters, brick pilasters, three on each side. And then even the corners of the building, we could switch to a brick and stuff.
Right ahead, Mr. Zeeman.
Just a better phrase, the discussion, it's, what other communities may or may not require relative design guidelines is really not a real nice discussion. The city has propagated specific design guidelines for corridors, and pursuant to those design guidelines, the dominant building material is brick. It does not call it out as something that's merely an accent, or to add some architectural detailing to, you know, to, you know, just a metal-clad building or what have you, or something like that. So again, it's the design guidelines for the city of Mentor that inform this discussion, and I just wanted to remind the planning commissioner.
Okay, thank you. So hearing the objections, what do you, what's your response? I mean, you know, adding the brick to the pillars is not going to be sufficient. So what's your alternative?
We could propose an integral colored concrete panels instead of painted.
Given Mr. Zeeman's comments about predominant building material is brick, how do you feel about that? I know how you feel, but.
Yeah, and if I may. My name is Matt Jerkowitz, Washington Prime Group, the owner of the mall and the landlord, who's going to be responsible for paying for all these accommodations. I just wanted to speak as well on what we think we can accommodate for the benefit of the board, the project, and for our tenants. I think one of the things, and I apologize, we had some traffic coming up from Columbus today, so I'm 15 minutes behind, but one of the things that we're hoping we can do today is get to a place where ultimately, we're taking back to our bosses what we think is going to get approved here, for them to review and tell us whether or not we're going, you know, to get their sign off. Ultimately, what we're dealing with right now is WPG, Great Lakes Mall, is trying to accommodate, because it will be our cost, trying to accommodate what ultimately is going to make you guys happy. So to date, what we've been trying to do, on the Johnny Cake side, you can see a faux facade that we've agreed to. I know that you guys probably have already talked about the pilasters. There's a water table across the front of the building. We've added some, to our landscaping plan, some low-lying vegetation along the facade. Let me show this to, if I can, just quickly. A couple things that we've been able to do to try to alleviate the impact. Go ahead. Some of the things that you see here, in addition to what you see structurally with the building, with the landscaping, adding trees, taking some low-lying vegetation in front of these building, in front of the water table, and then to the extent that we, you know, to the extent that we need to add some additional things to provide the kind of character that you guys would like to see, we're willing to talk about it, obviously. And I think the real challenge that we have is, the cost of this building will go from X to a magnitude of 130% if we move from a base tilt, not tilt-up, but poured concrete structure, and we go to a full CMU. So trying to find that happy medium that allows for us to move forward is really what I'm trying to get to.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
Taking that into consideration, there's a world of stuff that you can do with tilt-up panels, okay? I'm not real thrilled by it, but there is a water table that could be more of a rustication of the base. Instead of painted panels, maybe that, maybe there's more texture, brick type texturing of the full wall rather than just the columns, or just, I mean, something like that. I'm not trying to solve it for you, but I'm trying to say, if there's a path to finding your way through this.
Sure.
We're not telling you, you're going to do a cavity wall with brick and block, okay? But we also just don't want it to look like a warehouse.
Sure.
Which, we have warehouses that look more interesting than this in time.
I appreciate it, yeah.
So I'm just throwing that out, you know? So I guess the, I guess the path is, you got a cornice on it, that's good. The walls are high enough to block the mechanical equipment, that's good. You've done some articulation to the south side, which is where the main road is, that's good. We need more out of the panel system.
Okay.
I've done panel systems in the past, and I've done all kinds of things to them, putting things in the malls to create, you know, I'm just saying, you can do more with the panels, do more with colors in the panels, that might be the path.
So an additive color poured into the mix would allow for us to get a little bit more.
I'm looking at, I don't want to see a panel that looks like a lay-down concrete panel. I want to see some texture on it. Stone texturing, brick texturing, something that looks more like the traditional construction that the city would approve, the brick idea. If we can see more of that, that might be the path to go.
Okay. Just, can I just have one moment?
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
Kathy, you have anything that you want to add? Okay.
Is there any objection from anything?
I think that makes sense. That's where we're talking about, where he was talking about.
Trying to find a path, right.
Yep.
I understand. You can texturize the entire phase.
And then the columns themselves.
It'd still be brick. All right.
So as far as the, thank you for indulging.
Oh, sure.
So as far as the, as far as the, as far as the texturization of the panels, to the extent that we were able to come up with something that does provide texturization that was satisfactory to staff, you know, I think if that was, if that's a solution that gets us, gets us to yes, for everybody's benefit, we would like the opportunity to take that as a condition to an approval, and that we can, that we can go back and solve for.
Well, I think it's, it's just, it's the textures and the color.
And that's fine as well.
Right. But I don't know, you're asking us to approve that without knowing what it's going to look like.
Dangerous precedent.
Well, could it be, could it be tabled for him to come back?
Well, yeah, that's what I was, I mean, that's the, that's, at this point in the game, that's where we would go, is that we certainly won't vote it down, but I think we'd table it till the next meeting, and we could show us what you're proposing. And then we could approve something.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I don't know, if on Google, Google Earth, you can look at Beaver Creek, Ohio. I don't know if you're there. That store, I did complete form liner that looked like brick. It doesn't have the masonry color change between the brick mortar, but it does have the texture that you're looking for.
Right. And the coloration that looks like brick.
It does. It's the terracotta.
Okay. Well, that, that may be more like the example that we showed you. I mean, I know that's, that's actually brick in that, that example, but it's certainly more the look that we would be looking for. And, yeah.
Yeah, so there it is.
So that's Beaver Creek.
That's Beaver Creek, Ohio. That's form liner brick along the whole building.
Okay. And that's, I'm looking at the, the cornice is very similar. And you would do this on, you would do this on three sides, four sides of the building? Three sides?
Three sides, yeah. The back of that building is actually just.
Except that you see it from the street when you drive up to the mall. So could you just make it that color?
I could.
You don't have to put the form liner on it? I feel like I'm negotiating. I'm trying not to, I'm not, I don't want to be the person who tells you, you have to do this, solve your problem, but, but I, you know, I can see. So I think if, I know, again, I want to speak for everybody, but I'll speak for everybody. If you can make this store look like that, that's your path to approval.
I'm okay with that.
And wait, now let me, let me just back off and see what everyone else's comments are.
Go ahead. You wanted to say something. Go ahead.
All I was going to add is that you guys giving us a path that we can go now and work, work towards is most helpful. We will be, you know, we will be able to determine very quickly if there's anything that would cause us to come back, and of course, give you guys an opportunity to, you know, review if we had anything that we needed to change. But that's our, that's, that's something that we would, that we would be happy to have the ability to do.
So, Mr. Zeeman, can we give final approval and hold off on the architectural approval?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we do that? Give you an opportunity to bring something back for architectural approval, but we can approve the final site plan tonight.
And there'll be an additional condition, that the, that the architectural approval, submission in the future will be based on the Beaver Creek.
Beaver Creek. We need to separate the conditions, or we're good?
I'd like to make the other condition of this approval.
I would say items four through eight apply to the site plan.
Okay. So we'll do those four conditions for the site plan, and we'll hold off on the architectural approval. Okay?
If that's where we can get today, that's fantastic.
You're not going to bring black, bring a black wall back, are you?
I promise. No black wall.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask. Okay, just thought I'd ask. I'll entertain a motion if there are no more questions.
Motion to approve with how many?
Final.
Final site plan only.
Items four, or conditions four through eight?
Four through eight.
I'll second that.
Do you have a question?
I have one, just one more question.
Sure.
Item number five, regarding the trash compactor, metal fencing with slats, wood fencing, CM block, what are you looking for screening trash compactor?
I personally would like to see it match the building.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Right?
Yes, I agree.
Hey, call the rollhead when you're ready.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Teedman?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, motion to table architectural review.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to table the architectural review.
Second.
Ed, when you're ready.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Teedman?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Minor subdivision, under new business, minor subdivision to create one new lot at 9421 Hoos Road. Is that applicant here? Would you come up and identify yourself for the clerk, please? And give us a quick overview of what you'd like to do there.
My name's Todd Victor, and I'm trying to do a lot split, form liner, up to a lot on Hoos Road, build another house there.
So you're taking one lot and going into two lots?
Right.
Okay. Commission members, any questions for the applicant?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Cook?
I got a question on the, I'm familiar with this area and the sanitary, and you show an extension heading westbound, but I don't think you're going to have the fall, you won't have grade on that. I did a little research on it.
We're going to raise the house up.
How much?
Will be higher than the house across the street on the, on the other side of the street.
I still think that this sanitary in this right of way, you're going to have more of a problem than you think. I think that manhole where you want to put it's going to be out of the ground. Did you check with Lake County Utilities regarding any sanitary that you could do there?
Yes, we would have to raise it about six feet.
I can't hear you.
We would have to raise it about six feet to put it in there.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the lot itself, it's the sanitary line itself.
Right.
If you run that at point four, that manhole, you're going to be out of the ground by the time you get there. So I, I think you almost need to do a little bit more research on this sanitary before you, before we do a lot split and come up with a nonconforming lot, that you should do a little bit more research on how you're going to service this lot with sanitary. And also, that house right here, that's just to the west, the way that that's tied in is, you're not, you're not showing it correctly on this too, you're going to have more problems here than you think. Because that, that one's tied into the end of the manhole, and it's running down 50 feet in the right of way, so you're going to have to redo all that, as well as, which I, knowing what I know here, I think you've got more of a problem here, and I'd hate to approve a lot split, and then you not be able to service it with sanitary.
We're going to be high wall plumbing there, we're going to be the, almost the same elevation as the existing house, and that's who is going underneath the footer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, relative to nonconforming lots, and particularly when we're dealing with lots that aren't creating right angles, I know the commission doesn't necessarily see it, but we deal with it quite frequently in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals, where some of the, some of the existing lots of record that are nonconforming, you know, are often very challenging to build on, and that usually precipitates setback variance requests, and whether it's for the principal structure, or whether it's for, you know, an outbuilding or something of that nature. So, you know, particularly the unusual configuration, I think the staff report also called out some, some concerns relative to riparian setbacks, which would further, you know, limit the buildable area of the slot. I was just wondering whether or not some, some representation as to what exactly could, could be constructed on this lot without requesting any, any area or setback variances may inform the discussion, because, again, it's a, it's a nonconforming lot, and whether or not it's ultimately a good idea and represents good planning, I think what could get built on there is, without having to further compromise the code, is a very important discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's my understanding that right now, there's a, the lot is conforming, the existing lot, before the split. And afterwards, we'd have two nonconforming lots, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that, that just as a planning thing is not, I'm not strong about doing that, creating more, you know, creating two nonconforming lots, and, and with a lot of questions about how this, with the buildability of this lot, I'm.
We have, we'll have 45 feet width there still. We can build plenty of houses 45 feet wide.
Doesn't change it back.
And, and there, all around there, the, there's plenty of other lots in that area that are smaller than what I'm asking for.
Mr. Sedoti, did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You have a copy of the staff report, correct?
Yes.
Okay, did you read it?
Yes.
You see the problematic issues that the city engineer has pointed out?
Right, and I met with him yesterday, and wires will, wires will be any lower than the houses on both sides of it.
You're going to raise the wires at your cost?
If we have to, but I don't think we're going to have to, it's the same, same height as the existing driveways there.
What about the, the grade differential? He pointed out that that's very significant, and it creates site distance problems.
In the site distance, I went over with him, actually will be better site distance on this driveway, the one far.
What about the guardrail? That's a fairly new guardrail. I think it was installed by the county, correct?
Right, the county said we would just have to guardrail to conform.
At your cost?
Right.
Ms. Mitchell, have you heard from the city engineers subsequent to this meeting?
I was not aware of the meeting.
The city engineer talked to him, when, but he said he talked to him. I talked to him, met with the city engineer yesterday.
I think it's important, Mr. Chairman, that we hear back from the city engineer.
I think we need more information.
More information, much more information. I'm very uncomfortable.
So with that in mind, I'll entertain a motion to table this item.
Motion to table this item pending further discussions with the appropriate governmental agencies.
Second.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Teedman?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
And Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Item eight, miscellaneous review to amend a conditional use permit and architectural review at 9528 Diamond Center Drive. See, the boys are back in town.
Welcome back.
Hello. I'm Brian Seelinger.
I'm John Mack.
From the Brew Manner, and we're back for a review of the exterior materials, and then also change in the conditional use permit.
So you want to go from 30 barrels to 500 barrels, is that what?
Right, we, we figured that that would be the most that we'd be able to produce, you know, with our current system at that location, you know, so we're, without having to, you know, do steps up, I mean, we would anticipate producing maybe 150 to 200 barrels, you know, initially to then to service what was approved at the last planning commission meeting, you know, the, you know, the additional taproom in that area. But being able to, you know, to produce more based on need, and then also, some of the things, you know, the reason for that also is, you know, like last year, you know, we discussed with the City of Manner to produce wine for the summer concert series, and they were on board, and we were going to be producing wine for that, and we don't know exactly what those totals would be, but then there was a bump in the road with, I guess, a variance on actual city grounds, as they could do beer but not wine, or something like that. So that was something that we had, had discussions and contracted with the city. So anyhow, so it's just, it's part of what we feel our needs will be, and we feel that that would be the maximum that we could produce at that location.
So why don't we tackle the increase in number of barrels? We'll tackle that one first. Any comments, questions, commissioners? Any, any reason not to increase it?
Honestly, I wasn't sure why we were regulating that aspect of it to begin with.
Well, that's neither here nor there at this point, but we're talking about going from 30 to 500, right?
That's correct.
Anybody have any questions with regard to that?
No, I just have a, where are you going to keep all this wine, or the, or the barrels?
Well, the beer would be produced, and we have a full basement that we can use for barrel storage and things like that, so.
So when you up your, your production?
We brew on a one barrel system, so we only produce one barrel at a time when we produce. If maximizing, you know, brewing time and things like that, I could produce two barrels in one day, and maximizing five days a week, I could produce 10 barrels.
I guess what I, my, my question is just dealing with storage.
Yeah.
Where do you keep all these barrels? And though you may have the capacity to make a lot more, can you even store that amount of product on site, or?
I mean, it's made in cycles throughout the entire year.
So it's just?
It's a, it's a continual repeating cycle.
Okay, so you're not, you have, you have room?
Correct.
In your facility, in an appropriate way to store these barrels?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what.
So are we good with that? We're good with this, right? 30 to 500? Okay, now, continue. You got building materials there?
Yeah, the building materials, these were submitted, well, we were able, Akron Brick and Block, who had the original materials, has been out of business for some time. I dealt with Raymond Building Supplies, and the representative from there said that they knew the plant that bought the rights to these materials, and we brought them out, and we did side by side comparisons, and they match.
Mr. Varga was correct.
Well, so the, so the, there is, there is definitely a possibility of color variations, and one thing that I was hoping that we could make a slight modification is, on the side that's facing the, the west side, where there's going to be the shortest, maybe a five and a half foot wall, instead of having that tied directly in a budding, I was thinking about stepping it in and making it maybe six inches shorter, so there's an offset there, so that you don't pick up a color variation, there would be maybe just a six inch offset there. So that was, you know, something that we thought would help with, you know, if there are color variations, it doesn't become obvious.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think you've kind of proved my point, is that if you look long enough, you can find.
We looked.
It comes pretty close, comes pretty close, and there's always, you can take the same brick and install it five years later, and it's going to be lighter, or, you know, so there'll be some variation, but if you're in the ballpark, that's what we were.
And across the back, I don't think it matters, because there's, it's not touching anything that, you know.
But you're using all of that, that brick?
This, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yep, and if, I have this, the boards, but I have the full size block and the full size brick as well.
And for the sake of some of the other members here, there was a question about that why did you use metal roofing rather than the shingle, and my answer was, because the slope of that area is much lower, you can't put shingles on that roof, right?
Correct, it's.
So as long as your, your shingle, or your metal roof color is close to your shingle color, in general?
That's correct.
Then you're good, in my opinion.
Larry, do you want the building materials?
We already had, had them.
Okay. Okay. You don't want, you don't want to store anymore?
We're not adding on to the building in the near future.
Okay. So any other questions? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion. We're going from 30 to 500 on the brewing, and we're going with this material.
Final materials, yeah.
Which brought this evening.
Correct.
Okay.
You're going to do this under one motion?
Sure, we can do it under one motion. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the conditional use permit to allow the production of beer for sale at this site to be limited to 500 barrels per year, and a motion approv, same motion, approving the architectural presentation as made tonight with respect to the building materials.
Second.
Eddie, when you're ready.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Teedman?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
You're set.
Thank you.
They still driving across the lawn next to you?
No, yeah. We had, just quickly, I mean, is there something, you know, we had talked about that at the last one, there was, brought up some concerns, and, yeah, it's a pretty regular thing that they're still driving across that. Anything that could be put there, like, you know, something that would be like a bigger boulder or something that might just deter them, you know, I mean, people just, they just, I don't know if it's habit, or, but they just drive right across.
Gotcha.
So.
Is there anything that could be?
Are we talking about within the parking lot?
In the, in the planters, so the way that they, they have like a pass through, I'm not sure if it's for water runoff or for pedestrian traffic, but on the north, the most north part of that parking lot, there's like two planters that extend. If there was anything there, even a signs put up, like a post or anything, then it would just.
Decorative bollards.
Anything, just anything, I mean, even if it was landscaping, I would think then no cars would try and pull through there.
The rays, it's like, it's like, it shoots.
I know. I, after, I was there for lunch after, next door, after your last presentation, and I saw the car tracks driving through the.
It's just, yeah, it's, it's nonstop, so, and again, I don't know if it's just, you know, for right now, until they learn traffic patterns or whatever, but, you know, some type of obstacle would probably slow that down quite a bit.
Speaking of just the construction, they just don't know, the people are still turning a block down, talking about, oh boy, just changing that flow.
Gotcha. So, okay, fellas, thanks.
Thank you.
We knew that was coming.
Traffic working group.
Yes.
Next item, architectural review of a commercial building at 7787 Reynolds Road. See that applicant is here?
Good evening, my name is David Perkovich, I'm with LRC Realty, for the property owners of the old Bravo building, also the property owners of the adjacent building that's currently under construction, the Starbucks over there. So.
Give us a little overview of what you want to do.
Right.
You want to reimage the Bravo building?
Right, so we're, we're looking to reimagine the Bravo building. We met and actually briefly spoke to Ron Traub a number of months ago, when we were working on the Starbucks building, and said, you know, we had purchased the Bravo building at that time already, and that we, that there was a very high likelihood of us coming back in the very near future to repurpose that building. We had a good sense at the time, although we couldn't talk about it too much, that we would be looking at a multi-tenant building, probably just two tenants, and he gave us some direction that we should be looking to create, you know, a building that had a new image, was fresh, and didn't look like the same old Bravo building with just two different signs on it.
And he retired.
Yeah, right, and then he retired on me. And that, you know, that it came off as new, even though it is repurposing of an existing building here in town. So that really was our starting point, you know, how we went around about looking at this project, and from there, you know, we kind of looked at the bones that we had. We had a masonry building, it had a lot of sort of faux gingerbread that had been attached, because I guess it started out originally as a cookers some time back, and there, the process began, is how do we, how do we work with what we have in the bones, and still create a new, fresh look.
Kathy, any comments from your administration?
Other than the conditions noted on the, on the third page of the document, no.
And we're going to replant the trees in the, in the front of the building, correct? The ones out by the street?
Yeah, oh, the ones that were previously cut down by, yeah.
Okay, because I want to make that, I want to make that a condition.
Well, we do have, can you stop right there? You do have a real concern in that you have those utility lines that are right there, so whatever we plant, and I'm not against planting something, you need to be cognizant of.
Of the height.
Of the real, yeah.
Right.
Very real limitation.
So I always like to say, we put a man on the moon in 1969, we ought to be able to find a tree that only grows to a certain height. to find a tree that only grows to a certain height. Right?
Well, one is an engineering feat and the other one is a feat of nature.
I thought you were going to tell me that we really didn't go to the moon.
But I'm sure that we could find something. We're willing to work with you.
Okay, thanks. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead.
I think the new image looks good. I think you're on the right track and it's, it's a big difference from the old building, but I think it probably, you know, I don't think that anyone, I don't have any problem with the way you're going with that. I did have some questions about two things that just came to me. There's a, an existing trash enclosure in the back. What is that enclosed? How is that enclosed?
So you're correct, that's existing. There's really just some masonry walls that sort of provide some screening. It's not capable.
You speak up.
I'm sorry. It's not a full enclosure. The back is open, which I believe allowed access from behind for employees of Bravo and Cooker to easily access it.
Is there gates on the outside of it? I mean, it's not actually enclosed. I mean, I go, I'll, I have a question about that to the city, but I'll, and then there's another space. It's, you can see it in that drawing that was just up. It's number 11 and it says that space is new storage enclosed by tenant under separate permit. What is that? Because it doesn't show up in the elevations and we don't allow outdoor storage, so.
Well, our tenant that is coming in is a restaurant, fell from the interior plans that we gave, and they are in the smoking business and lease storing.
Storing wood? Oh, I thought you were going to tell me they had smokers in the back. I'm, you know, I was a little problematic about storing wood. And is there some kind of enclosure around that?
Yes.
And what kind of enclosure is that?
They have not provided us a whole lot of description of that.
Okay, well.
If there was a, if there was a requirement, I'd certainly bring that back.
Well, from a safety point of view, I can't speak to storing wood next to the commercial building, but from an architectural point of view, I'd want that maybe to be similar to the building wall and not so that you can see through it. And that the gates be self-closing and also opaque, that you don't see that you're storing wood on the outside. But I'm not sure about the technical aspect of storing wood next to the building.
We have the Assistant Fire Chief here, just so conveniently here today.
Well, what do you think about storing a bunch of wood next to the building?
I will check with our fire prevention bureau and get an answer for you by tomorrow.
Yeah, because that might be a safety hazard to do that.
I mean, I just know that it's done in a lot of other places, you know, the barbecue, smokehouse places.
Ask the Hobby Lobby people, we're not in a lot of other places.
No, I guess if you're into smoked meats, then.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just concerned about the safety aspect of it. That's fine. I thought maybe you were going to tell me they had a smoker out there.
Yeah.
I've seen that in places too where they have an outdoor smoker. But storing wood next to the building, I, we just don't want to see it. So the, you know, eight foot wall, opaque gates, something like that, but I think we're still going to go back to the fire marshal for the appropriateness of.
And the gate's got to be self-closing. Because as we want to learn, not everybody closes the gates when they've been there. So the gates remain wide open and you see what's behind there.
As I often see on dumpster enclosures. Yes, you're absolutely right.
And that's the second half of my discussion, which is.
Right, I knew that, I knew that's where you were going with that.
Is there enclosure or gates or something?
There are not gates there now.
So we would like to see, I don't know that it has to be that full width because obviously that's wider than even the road it comes in. But I think as you think about enclosing this, you might think about putting gates
It's fine.
On that so that we don't see that also.
It's fine, yeah.
Because the public goes right around this building. So we don't want to be looking in at the, at the trash.
Understood.
Okay, so that would be, that would be a condition and the wall and the gates for this enclosure, assuming you can build it, is going to be another condition.
So Chief, would you get back to Kathy on that?
I will.
Okay, thanks. Kathy, you can let us know?
Absolutely. We'll add it as a condition.
Well, the, the nature of the enclosure, that it's like the building wall that it's adjacent to, that it's eight feet high, that the gates are self-closing, that's the condition that from an architectural point of view, we're going to put on it.
The Assistant Chief's going to check with fire prevention to see if it's, what's permitted.
If he says you can't do it, then you can't do it, that's.
And as far as the height is concerned, is eight feet a requirement? Or if they come back and say it could be shorter?
Yeah, it could be shorter.
As long as it's not enough to screen.
Let's just, let's just assume it's six, a minimum of six feet, but I don't know how much wood you're going to.
It has to be a foot above.
Foot above whatever you're storing, right.
That's clear, yeah.
And then the, the enclosure for the, to put gates on there, that would be opaque, that would be self-closing, you know, so that you can't see.
I got it.
That would be another.
So any idea how long it would take to hear back on that?
I'll know tomorrow.
Is that soon enough?
It would work.
Okay. Sorry to ask. Anything else, fellas? Kathy, go right ahead.
Just a couple of comments. One of the proposed conditions, the city was talking about the size, shape and color of the cornices and coping shall be consistent across the roof lines to tie the spaces together. Could you just, I noticed you have some color samples there. The color renderings we have, colors really look very different and they, to me, they don't go together, but could you kind of walk me through your color schemes that you're sort of proposing?
The intention is that the colors are different. So when we saw that condition, and again, as David mentioned in the initial meetings with staff, the intention was to make the two sides of the building separate and look different. So when we saw that condition, we have no problem with the size and shape of the cornices, but as you can see on the renderings, the, the colors of those cornices are intentionally different to, to create the different look of the two sides.
And I'm in agreement with that. I think that's perfectly fine. I think just from the standpoint of our packet here, the two colors that you have really do not go well together. So if, if the actual samples, you know, tell a different story, that's really what we're looking for.
It would probably be best to pass this around as far as the camera's concerned. I mean, so the materials are the same, the materials, the hardy plank is the same hardy plank, it's two different shades of gray, one being a little bit cooler, one being a little bit warmer. The pink colors are also similar in tone, but also different warmth, one being warmer and one being cooler. Again, the intention was to create the different sides of the building, tenant A, tenant B. The, the window mullions are also shown here. On tenant B side, there's an anodized window and on anodized mullion on the A side, it is a dark anodized. So the, it's probably best to pass this.
Yeah, and it looks like to me, just from looking at the color samples, they, they go much, much better together than what we're seeing on our rendering.
This is the problem with, with getting colors on a reproducible document, that a printer doesn't identify the colors properly, so.
So let me ask you a question. How close are you to the second tenant? And the reason I'm asking that question is I don't want half a building done and another half to languish while we're waiting for a tenant.
I'm sorry, to what?
To languish.
Well, you know.
I understand, but you understand our concern, my concern is, is you're going to finish half of the building and then the other half, you're going to wait till you have somebody to go in there, I would assume.
No, as far as architecture and as far as completing the building, we're going to.
Do it all at one time?
We're going to do it all at one time, yeah.
Okay. Then that's fine.
As far as tenant, we're, we're working on it. I'd like to say that we are close, but I've seen deals that are close that have, you know.
Not happened.
Not happened, and I've seen deals that I thought were miles apart that all of a sudden get done.
So your intention is to do it all at one time?
Oh, certainly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. Any comments?
So do we want to modify item three of the conditions and remove the word color?
Well, either that or just the word consistent should be similar. Something to that effect.
Or based on the?
Yes, or based on the samples chosen.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion. You got something else you want to add? You okay?
Yeah.
What was the question on the awnings?
There was a comment made about the awnings and light fixtures being installed at the, at the same time of the exterior construction. In our initial package, the awnings and light fixtures were called out to be by the tenant. The, the proposed conditions were that those awnings go in at the time of improvements of the exterior of the building, and we are in agreement with that. It is, though, important, I think what David was questioning, that the awnings as are the other colors on A side, B side, are also slightly different. They're similar in, in size and orientation, but their materiality is slightly different. So it goes back to what we had just talked about, about the colors of the building.
So you're staining the brick?
Correct.
What color are you staining it?
The colors that are on the, on the sample board.
Okay. So where I see gray, it's going to be gray, and where I see tan, it's going to be tan?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Dana. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, help me with this now. Motion to approve with, if I'm hearing you correctly, ten conditions. And, and a revision in condition number three, striking the word consistent, putting in similar or based on the material samples presented to the planning commission at this meeting. Number nine, being appropriate landscaping materials shall be replanted along the Westerly property line with the subject property. And number 10, Mr. Varga, about the gates, you want to state that one?
One had to do with the, the wood storage enclosure and gate, self-closing gate. The wall would be minimum six feet or a foot above the storage height. And the second one was the enclosure, the inclusion of new trash enclosure gates, self-closing, and whatever wall adjustment needs to be made for that.
That's all on 10, right?
That's, yeah, that's, that's 10. The other one was nine.
Trash gates are also.
Yes. That's so that they're closed. The problem is we have people who have enclosures that have gates on them that are wide open and defeat the entire purpose of, of not seeing the trash, so.
Was there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
And Mr. Snow.
No.
Number 10, final subdivision of Phase One to create 56 residential lots and Phase Two to create 31 residential lots at Johnny Cake Ridge. If you, identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Thank you. Jordan Burns, on behalf of the applicants. With me this evening is Tim Posar from Badeos, one of the applicants, and Dusty Keeney from Flares Engineering. Before I begin, I want to correct something from the agenda. Agenda item was just read here. We are here this evening for final subdivision, or final plat approval for Phase One of this subdivision only. We are not here seeking approval of final plat for Phase Two. And our application makes that clear. By way of background, the applicants here have been before this planning commission, twice before. On June 14th, this planning commission granted preliminary plat approval for this subdivision. At its October 18th, 2018 meeting, the planning commission granted final plat approval for what was then proposed to be Phase One of this subdivision. At that time, Phase One was planned to consist of a portion of the development that had access to Route 84. Johnny Cake wrote and would terminate at a temporary cul-de-sac. There were some concerns that were raised during that, that October meeting, and they're outlined in staff report for, for this proposal. There was a, a condition imposed that Phase Three, which is the portion that enters from, enters and exits from Mentor Avenue, be turned into Phase Two because it was pointed out at that time that that would allow quicker access to the development than the Johnny Cake Ridge access point. With those safety concerns in mind and, and other similar issues, the applicants are now here with a request to replace what was then Phase One with what we are now identifying as Phase One, which would be that portion of the development accessible from Mentor Avenue, continuing up through the cul-de-sac, the permanent cul-de-sac at Freighting Court and branching off also before that cul-de-sac or the street known as Shelley Drive, which would have a temporary cul-de-sac until Phase Two, which would now be the portion that's accessible from Johnny Cake Ridge is constructed. That way, one, we will be providing a quicker means of access for safety forces to the first phase of the development, and two, we will be satisfying the concern that was expressed about the need for connectivity both at Mentor Avenue and Johnny Cake Ridge by completing those two phases. With that, I'm going to turn, turn things over to Tim and Dusty and I maybe have some additional comments regarding some of the staff, staff comments here as well after that.
Do you have any comment on the 600-foot cul-de-sac length?
We do. We took note of the staff's recommendation against the waiver of that requirement. However, we also took note that in this planning commission's preliminary plat approval, it expressly waived that restriction. And this plan is, is not simply substantially in conformance with the preliminary plat, it is virtually identical to the preliminary plat. So it's our position that the, that requirement as applied to this subdivision has already been waived. That would, I want to be clear, that would only apply to the Freighting Court cul-de-sac because that's the only permanent cul-de-sac that is part of this phase. Under the city's codified ordinances, that 600-foot restriction does not apply to temporary cul-de-sacs. And I mentioned, there would be a temporary cul-de-sac at Shelley Drive.
Okay, I'm going to ask the Assistant Fire Chief, what's your feeling on temporary cul-de-sacs?
Our view is, as long as we can, we need two access routes, we'd prefer two access routes into the development in the interest of public safety and those residents within that development.
Kathy, any comments back from the administration? You did a little homework on the 600-foot length.
Well, I guess to address the first comment that was made with regard to the condition that was issued with the preliminary approval, that was for a phase that has since been modified and it was for, so what you're seeing now isn't the same plan.
It's different.
So I don't, and it was, it was our opinion and we looked at that and we were, we were aware of that condition that was placed back in June of last year. aware of that condition that was placed back in June of last year, but I don't think we're comparing apples to apples in that regard.
And when you did your homework on the 600-foot length, what did you find?
Well, we were doing some research. We had a number of discussions internally with our engineers department, with the fire department, and looking at other communities, the length of the 600 feet. Specifically, from a planning standpoint, we actually found some information on the American Planning Association website with regard to professional planners' take on cul-de-sacs and what the ideal length is. And this is, goes back to 2007, which has not been modified since then. It did a comparison of common lengths of cul-de-sacs. They ranged anywhere from 500 feet to 1,000 feet. And it was the recommendation of the, of the report, which was a Planner's Advisory Service memo that was written as, and the title of it is "A Contemporary Look at Cul-de-sacs and Dead End Streets." The 2,000 standards indicated that they recommended a 500-foot maximum to any cul-de-sac. And they listed the safety reasons that have been noted by the, the fire department as well as by the staff.
And it's the opinion of the administration that these phases that was approved earlier this year or last year is not germane any longer?
Well, one of the conditions of the October review, when you guys had the, I'm sorry, when the planning commission had the Phase 1 in front of you at the time, it was for 31 residential lots, and it came off of Johnny Cake Ridge. Phase 1 is now off of Mentor Avenue. And at that time, we indicated that the phases needed to be, Phases 2 and 3 of that particular plan needed to be switched if there couldn't be an agreement with police and fire to accommodate the secondary access and the timing of the secondary access. I don't think the applicant nor the city is arguing the fact that, that the, that the subdivisions should have a secondary access point. It's the issue of when that secondary access point goes in. And we, as, as, as an administration, feel that, you know, for safety reasons and, you know, in, in the, in the interest of overall public safety and services provided to the subdivision, that, that secondary access point needs to be accounted for in a timely manner and not upon the completion of Phase 1 after 56 lots have gone in.
Okay. Mr. Zeeman, any, any comment from you?
This was a rezoning pursuant to a development plan. If I understand the applicant's position tonight correctly, they want to proceed with what they're now labeling Phase 1 without providing any assurances that the street network, which was approved, upon which this rezoning was expressly conditioned, will in fact ever be constructed. So, that obviously means that this so-called temporary cul-de-sac may be there for the next 30 years, for, for all the city knows, and we have seen instances where that has occurred in the past. This was approved with two points of connection and between Route 84 and US Route 20. And I don't think that the applicant, well, we haven't heard completely from the applicant, but if it's just merely the applicant's convenience or some other driver, I don't know why the approved street network can't be bonded such that the city is assured of its ultimate completion. And if the applicant cannot provide that assurance or refuses to provide that assurance, then this specific phasing plan, based on what the administration has, has, has revealed and the fire department's very serious concerns about safety, has to be given priority. And so, come back with a different phasing plan. You know, there are options available, but the specific phasing plan apparently raises some very, very serious concerns, and we would ask the commission to, to weigh those concerns very heavily. Thank you.
Thanks. Comments?
Thank you. I just want to be clear on a few points here. One, as I, as I mentioned, and I want to emphasize this, the preliminary plat that was approved in June was where this planning commission expressly waived the 600-foot limitation. So, if this planning commission were to now impose that limitation, that would be at odds with the preliminary plat. I don't want to, I don't want to create a hypothetical that seems unreasonable, but if we were to come to you with a, a final plat that had a, a cul-de-sac that was 600 feet, that was in conformity with what we're now saying, that would be, that would be in conflict with our preliminary plat that you've approved. We are, we are presenting something that is in whole, wholly within conformity with the preliminary plat. In essence, what, what the, the planning staff is asking is for you to now retroactively amend the preliminary plat to, to, to take away that waiver.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you brought us apples to apples here.
No, no, this is apples to apples, and that's my point. This is, this is exactly the same.
I mean, that's, that's a point of contention, I'm guessing.
I, I hope it isn't, because again, with a preliminary plat that was presented was the entire subdivision that's proposed here. The only, the only difference now is that we're presenting a final plat for a portion of the development, a phase of the development. It's, the lines match up with the preliminary plat, it's just for a portion. And I want to be clear, that's, that's what your codified ordinances allow a, a property owner, a developer like, like us to do under, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, can I just point out something?
Sure.
In the preliminary subdivision plat that was approved on June 14th, 2018, the preliminary subdivision contained 108 residential lots. That number is not the same, so it is not the same plat.
And while he's looking something up, I have a, just a question for clarification purposes. The concern about the 600-foot cul-de-sac length is, is only in the design of Phase 3, because that's the permanent cul-de-sac that we're talking about? Or is he talking, are we talking about the temp, the length of the temporary cul-de-sac?
Well, if you look at the numbers that we provided on the first page of the staff report, we outlined the length of Freiting Court as well as the, which, to the end of the cul-de-sac of Freiting Court, that length is, I believe it's 1,400 feet.
That's the Phase 3 section of the plat.
No, in Phase 1, which is the, Freiting Court is the street that, that comes off of Mentor Avenue.
Yes, but in the, in the final development of this plan, that, that, that street is contiguous to Ridge Road. So, you're talking about the, to the temporary cul-de-sac.
The temporary cul-de-sac is at the end of Shelley Drive, which extends off of Freiting Court. Are we not talking about the same thing?
That's what I'm confused about. For the sake of this, there's a cul-de-sac here of some length in Phase 3. This won't be a cul-de-sac when it continues all the way through, right? So, we're, I'm talking the permanent design, not the temporary design. That the only cul-de-sac in the permanent design is, would be the one in Phase 3.
No, that the end of, where he's got his pointer right now, at the, at the end of Phase 1, that's a permanent cul-de-sac.
But that's only, that only comes from the corner to that length.
Comes from Mentor Avenue all the way to the end there.
Not in the final design. In the final design, that street is contiguous all the way through. That cul-de-sac's a very short cul-de-sac.
So, what's, what's your question?
Well, I'm just trying to get clarification about which cul-de-sac and what length we're talking about. I could stand up and do this to some degree.
Yeah.
This cul-de-sac is very short. This is a contiguous path.
The, the street changes names there.
Not a continuous.
I don't care about the name of the street. I'm just saying that this cul-de-sac is quite short. That cul-de-sac to here is much longer. That's also a short cul-de-sac. This is a through road that goes all the way through. So, this is not the, the length of the permanent cul-de-sac I'm concerned with. I'm more concerned about that length of permanent cul-de-sac.
And, and my, I appreciate the clarification. And, and my point is that that street layout is precisely the same street layout as was part of the preliminary plat. There were, there were four lots that were created through...
And I'm not even questioning the, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm trying to make sure we're talking about the same cul-de-sac. The, the road coming in from Mentor Avenue in the final plan is not a cul-de-sac road. It's only the end of it, that little bit that's cul-de-sac.
We consider the entire length to be the cul-de-sac.
But you have, you have an intervening road that goes in, that's, it's not a dead
end. I mean, that, that road goes all the way through.
That goes to a temporary cul-de-sac.
Well, that's the point I'm getting at. The difference between the temporary condition and the permanent condition. The temporary condition is the problem, not the permanent condition.
Both are the problem. If you didn't have Shelley Drive there and that road went extended all the way to the end of the, of the current proposed cul-de-sac in Phase 1, you're still, the, the width, the length of that road is still exceeding 600 feet.
In Phase 3, that...
No, we're not talking about Phase 3. We're talking about Phase 1.
Okay. I understand. We're talking about the, the problem is with the temporary condition, not the permanent condition, not the final build-out condition.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
The problem is that there may not be a permanent road network.
I understand it. I just understand, I just want to make sure I know what we're talking, we're, we're mostly focused on the temporary condition. That's what I'm concerned about.
We're focused on a temporary condition that could last indefinitely.
It could last indefinitely. We're concerned about the problems that we have with Phase 1.
If Phase, if Phase 2 is never constructed.
Correct. We're not concerned about any other aspect of the design. If, if Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3 is built, and the portion in Willoughby is built, do we have any problems with the layout of the subdivision?
No, it's as approved.
That's right. That's what I'm getting at. So, we're only talking about the temporary condition.
No, but I mean, you can't even, you can't, you can't disconnect the cul-de-sac at the end of Freiting Court from the rest of the street.
Well, it only, the cul-de-sac only goes to the intersection of the other, of the intervening road. Now, in the temporary condition, I understand what you're saying. You have this whole length that's one, one access only. But that cul-de-sac isn't all the way to Mentor Avenue, it only goes to the intervening street.
Again, the issue is...
Temporary.
And temporary can become permanent.
I understand.
So, when, when the question was brought up about why can't you develop the whole property at one time, in terms of the road network, why can't you?
Practical reasons.
Money?
Money is one of those practical reasons, as, as is true for any, any development. There's also the, the need to, to create demand for, for the development, to, to create some intensity of development. If, if 100 lots, 115, I'm sorry, 120 lots were available all at once, as opposed to 56 in the first phase, there would be, there would be economic pressure to reduce the, the price of those lots. That would change the economics of this. And, and I want to be clear before, before we move too far from the point, I understand the concern, and, and Mr. Zeeman and I have discussed his concern over the prospect that any, any development can, can be interrupted during the course of, of its development. But I want to, I want to be clear that, that your codified ordinances, just by virtue of the fact that we're talking about temporary cul-de-sacs and the fact that they expressly state that temporary cul-de-sacs are not subject to that 600-foot limitation, that, that acknowledges that, that phasing is something that is permitted by your code. There's other language in the final plat provisions that also make clear that a final plat, I'm reading now, a final plat may constitute only that portion of the project which is proposed for recordation and development at the time. And then the bonding requirements that Mr. Zeeman referred to are the bonding requirements that come into play after a final plat has been approved. Now, that, given that a final plat can be only a portion, that's what your code says, that's Section 11104, and that the bonding requirements under 110902 apply only after the final plat is approved, you put all that together and the, the fact that the code contemplates temporary cul-de-sacs, and that tells all of us here, should, that, that phasing, like what we're proposing, is, is permissible and, and understandably so in developments like this, where because of the size of the development, the scale, the number of lots that are being, that are going to be developed ultimately, developing that all at once, conditioning the development of one portion on the bonding of another portion, this is not what your code provides, and it's not, it's not economically feasible. So, so we're sensitive to that, and I don't want to suggest that we aren't. We're, of course, sensitive to safety. That's of paramount importance, and we can talk some about the safety concerns here. And again, part of the reason that we're here is because we found that this, this proposed phasing plan addresses some of the safety concerns that were raised by this planning commission and by Willoughby's planning commission. And, and so we're here trying to address those in a more effective manner. But we, we, we aren't in a position to, to tell you that we can fund the entire development all at once, and frankly, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be asked to do that, because that's not what your code requires. So, so we're happy to talk about this phase. We appreciate the concerns, and we can, we can address them, but we want to be clear that we are doing just what your code contemplates. We are proposing just what your code contemplates with a plan that, that conforms with that preliminary, that preliminary plat.
So, to answer Kathy's question, this is not a separate phase, a new phase?
This is, this is a phase that reflects the, a portion of the preliminary plat. The only difference, the road configuration is identical. The road lengths, the road, the, the, the way in which the roads move through the development are all identical. There were a handful of lots that were created by virtue of the elimination of a gas well that, that took up some of the space where lots would have otherwise been in the preliminary plat. That gas well is, is being kept and eliminated so that there is an opportunity to create some additional sublots. And, and there are some sublots, and again, we can talk about them, some additional sublots throughout the development that have been narrowed a bit to allow for, for the development of some additional sublots. But the street layout is the same, the street lengths, the street widths, all of that is identical to the preliminary plat.
I have a question. Notwithstanding everything you just said, which may be completely accurate, I'm not debating that, but it doesn't alleviate our responsibility or our judgment to still require two means of egress to the first phase? Correct?
The subdivision was expressly approved via an approved development plan by the city council. That was the condition of the rezoning. What we're hearing now is that give us part of the subdivision that was approved, and fingers crossed, that road connection to Route 84 will occur in the future. If economics were such that this development plan, as presented, as approved, as asked for, may not in fact get built, I think that was a pretty material disclosure that should have been made at that time. Now, we're hearing that for economic convenience, the developer does not want to put in or bond or provide any assurances whatsoever that this road network will connect between Route 20 and Route 84. And the city's position is that we have to therefore proceed with utmost caution, because obviously, if it would never, if it were never built, the city will be left with, in the judgment of our safety services, an extremely long cul-de-sac which terminates in something that today is being labeled temporary, but 30 years from now will be de facto permanent, and it will provide a serious threat to the provision of emergency services. So, it's not that you can't, in theory, have a phasing plan. The question is, the phasing plan that is in front of the planning commission, does it represent good planning? Is it consistent with the rezoning and the approved development plan? And does it, and, and if approved, would it present safety issues for the residents that may locate in there? And the answer to all of those things is not in favor of approving this specific phase request. Now, why the developer won't go back to the original Phase 1 and proceed with that, again, we don't, we don't have an answer to that. This is a... This is a preference that they want to do what was previously Phase 2, and that they want to now do that as Phase 1. It's for their convenience, is there some economic drivers behind that that we're not privy to? Perhaps. But our role here is to make sure that this is solid planning, and that it's done in a safe manner. And what they're proposing in the judgment of the administration, judgment of the fire department, is not that. Again, there's an easy solution to this, which is just bond it, just make sure that this roadway system is built in a timely fashion. And they won't do it. They hold the key to this problem. So that obviously is something that, I think, is a self-created problem on the part of this developer.
If we approve this plan with the conditions, one of them being the bonding condition, we will have done our due diligence.
Could I interject for a moment, please? I just want, we had a meeting with staff and Terry Scott, the fire inspector, and Chief Searls, to discuss this before it was officially submitted. And at that meeting, at least the impression I got at that meeting, maybe I was seeing things differently, but I got the impression that the fire department was happier with this phasing because of the access off of Mennor Avenue, rather than having to circle all the way around through Willoughby to access Phase 1. At that meeting, the chief and the inspector kept hammering on providing a second means of access, which we do show on Page 3 of 20, you know, we have, are proposing a gravel drive for temporary access from the temporary cul-de-sac out to Johnny Cake Ridge. We specifically included that in the submittal as a request of the fire department to provide that second means of access. We're happy to, you know, part of the staff report from the engineering comments were additional details for the access drive, additional details for the temporary cul-de-sac, and a maintenance plan for that temporary access. We're happy to work with the fire department and the engineering department to come up with an emergency access drive that would be satisfactory to them as far as handling the weight of the trucks, and the widths, and the materials, and the composition, all of those things. We didn't give a whole lot of detail, I guess with the intention of, as this moves along, to work specifically with them to make sure we provide something that is satisfactory to them. As far as the phasing, quite frankly, changing the phasing, the preference from the developer's standpoint was to come off of Johnny Cake, and quite frankly, it wasn't a money thing, because all of the utilities come off of Mennor Avenue. So to put that second phase in, we were, would have been, it would have been more expensive to do it. So a big crux of the change in the rephasing was safety issues and access issues.
Is that your understanding?
I'm not sure what occurred at that meeting. I understand they did talk about a temporary drive that would be able to support the vehicles to access that area. We always prefer the permanent drive, but if it's approved and we have to work with a temporary drive.
Go ahead.
One concern with the temporary drive, and Dusty's correct, in the items that we discussed, one of the concerns we have is maintenance of the access drive, and how that would be plowed, maintained, in poorer weather condition. Also, if you note, the notation on the access drive, the temporary access drive, it says that it would be installed after 20 homes in Phase 1 are occupied. So I guess I question, why would it take that long for the access drive to be installed? So, and they would have to be occupied, it's not even a matter of putting it in immediately.
And we would be happy to, I mean, if that's something we need to do, that number honestly came specifically from that meeting, because the chief and the inspector were concerned, obviously, about having 56 homes on a temporary cul-de-sac, and I believe a number came, I believe it's code that, once you get over 30, is when, per fire code, is when you need to have second access. So we put that in there thinking that, you know, once homes start going in, we'd be happy to put the second access in. If it's something that needs to go as part of, like, right off the bat, I think that we would be amenable to that.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we table it tonight? Have you guys meet with the fire department, and come up to a recommendation on the number of units, and also the maintenance agreement and all that? Is that something you can do?
If you give us just a moment.
Sure, go right ahead.
While they're discussing that, I just wanted to have, just an informational question. As part of this project that's in Willoughby, has that been approved by Willoughby?
I believe the answer is yes.
Okay.
Mr. Zeeman, didn't you not want to be?
Sort of yes.
Sort of yes, okay.
Do you not want to be informed of filing these two plats at the same time?
Correct. As the planning commission will remember, what was originally proposed for Phase 1, that being the lands that are access off of Route 84, there was to be concurrent plating so that, because that phase was split between Mentor and Willoughby. So both plats, so that phase was approved, again, on this express condition that there would be concurrent filing, so that we didn't get into, you know, a situation where Willoughby, for whatever reason, did not allow this connection to Route 84.
Okay. So that's gone.
They are not requesting to plat what they are now labeling as Phase 2 at this time.
So, do you have an answer?
I think we do. We have some, the short answer is, we are happy to have you impose a condition that we must, we must construct a temporary, secondary means of access that meets the fire department's requirements, whatever they are. And we'll subject ourselves to their determination of that after the fact, in terms of its construction and its maintenance, and whether it's got to be built when there are 20 homes occupied, or 10, or 30, whatever that is.
Or none.
Or none.
Okay.
We can abide by that. We would prefer that this not be tabled on that basis, because we're confident that we can work out those details with the fire department, and we suspect, like us, you will ultimately defer to the fire department's determination.
Right.
Let me have a question then to the fire marshal, assistant fire marshal, fire marshal.
Deputy chief.
Deputy chief. Have you approved temporary roads like this in the past for this purpose?
I believe they have in the past off of Becker Court, is that a temporary road to that marshy landing?
That's a right-of-way.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just, for our information, we're trying to figure out what the viability of this agreement would be, or this suggestion.
Just in fairness to the fire department, they wouldn't have approved it. It wouldn't have been approved by you. They would have made a recognition.
Well, I understand, but we're being asked to proceed on the basis of a possible or a agreement between the fire department and these folks on the construction of this road. So if we go ahead and we approve this with that as a condition, I just want to know what the viability of that possibility is.
Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
Again, I think there's a lot of unknowns with that, you know, maintenance of it, can it get plowed? If it does, is it still a surface that, I mean, these are not minor pieces of equipment that'll be running down there.
You kind of just answered my question, which means, and I know they don't like this idea, but it sounds to me that we should table this until that agreement, that understanding or agreement is made.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'm going to make that a motion. Sorry, guys. That we table this until there is an agreement on the nature and operational parameters for this temporary road.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Now, I have a question. I'll do it after the vote. Go ahead.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
No.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Oh.
And Mr. Snow.
Yes. So five to two? Okay. So we made a motion to table, and it's been tabled, subject to, you're having some discussions with the fire department about how you're going to handle the access, the access road. Okay. Kathy, Director's Report?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Chairman. Ms. Mitchell, a recent drive-by of the Taco Bell on Diamond Center Drive has revealed that their front exterior tower is showing signs of unsightly and severe corrosive rusting. And if it's not addressed now, this is going to create an eyesore and a bliting of that area down there. Most likely, the water coming off the roof is moving through a galvanized or iron pipes creating this corrosive process. I have pictures I shared with the chairman, I shared with Mr. Varga.
Larry, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. That building material was designed to do that, to have that patina to it. That's the way it was approved, and that's the way the one that was supposed to have been built on Tyler Boulevard was approved. The metal panel is designed to patina, basically.
I understand the concept completely, but what's happening is not a consistent, it's streaky, it's different colors.
Terrible. I mean, it looks like it's an old building.
It's not, I mean, I'm familiar, like, for instance, Corten Steel, what that looks like when it patinas. But it's not, this is unsightly. This is not, it's a consistent change in the appearance. This looks like it's running, it's affected by water.
Really tracks from the building. It just looked old.
You know, they did explain there would be some patina to it, and that's the way it was, it came in one color, and they said it would end up.
I understand.
This more rustic.
This does not look like patina. This looks like staining. I mean, it's affected by surface water, or it looks like it's running. Now, that's not patina. Patina changes with the oxygen in the air.
Would you do a drive-by?
Take a look at it.
Take a look at it.
I'm just letting you know that.
Okay.
You haven't seen?
I haven't seen it yet. That may be why it's doing that.
Who's telling you what you're communicating to us?
That's what they told us at the meeting. Because we questioned it at the time, because, remember those building elevations, it looked weathered.
Yeah, weather is fine, this is not weathering, this is staining.
This is terrible.
Okay. Could this be, you know, a different reaction than what they were expecting?
Do a drive-by.
We'll do a drive-by, we'll take a look at it and evaluate.
Because I know what patina is, and that doesn't not look like patina.
Could you report at the next meeting on your Director's Report?
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Zeeman?
Rust is rust, I mean.
Not just rust, it's something else that's rusted.
Anybody have anything else? Make any motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.